Your Town Matters is funded by the government of Canada. Through the local journalism initiative. And supported by Cactus Media, Canada's independent community television association.
I'm Vicky Hogarth and welcome to CHCO's special election coverage. On this show, we will meet the candidates for St. Andrews Town Council. With 15 candidates running for six council seats, voters will have a lot to consider before casting their votes in the May 10th municipal election. In keeping with election guidelines, each candidate will be given the same questions with up to 10 minutes of interview time. How the candidates choose to use their time is up to them. The candidates were sent the questions and the rules prior to the interview and were given separate interview times. Starting in alphabetical order, here's my interview with Kate Akeji. Kate, tell us your backstory. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Why are you running once again for council?
Okay, well, thanks, Vicky, first of all, for having me on CHCO TV. And for this opportunity to speak. Most people know me because I've lived here all of my life. I was born on where I live, which is Indian Point. They don't like us to call it Indian Point because of the term Indian, but that's where I live, 484 Indian Point Road. They actually call it Water Street and I'm hoping, you know, that I'll be able to change that one day. But anyway, I've lived here all my life. I was a teacher for over 30 years and taught from grade one right through to grade nine, 10. So my background is here for St. Andrews. I volunteered a lot in the community. I was on a lot of committees. I still am, even though COVID cuts back a lot of things. I'm still involved, I think, in my community, probably not as much because of the pandemic. But anyway, and the reason I wanted to run was, I guess, I wanted there to be women on the council. And I don't think we have very many women that are running. I'm glad for the other two that are running. And I hope, you know, I wish that there would be more, but I know everybody is busy and whatnot. And then I had my friends ask me and ex-students ask me, so I thought maybe I should reconsider and try again for council. So I'd like to be involved in what happens in St. Andrews.
What do you think are, in your opinion, some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
Well, you mean beside COVID-19? I mean, that is, the pandemic is always our concern. But I think sea level rising, I think we have a lot of things with our town, the aging structures and whatnot that we have. There's a lot of things. The wharf is an issue and although we've addressed it in the past council that I was on, it's still going on. And there's short-term rentals. There's quite a few things that are different for our town. The times are changing and a lot of people don't like change from St. Andrews because we've done it this way for years and years and years. But we need to have a little bit of change and I think we need to have those things looked at and not rush through them, but get the voice of the people which we are hearing from. I know myself, I've had lots of calls and whatnot to talk about those issues. But yeah, I would say sea level rising and the pandemic for a while is going to take our priorities. But we do have the structures and the roads. I mean, we need to have paving done as well in a lot of places. So I think that's what I think is happening with St. Andrews. We have to, we're going into the next century, but we certainly need to be inherit or combine the past with the present or future.
If you are re-elected to council, which would be your case, what are some of the key steps you would take to make the community a better place?
Well, I'd like to see us all work together. And I mean, when I say work together, I mean, I think as a town, we can't do it alone. We'd have to get the other towns on board so that we, because we're now forming a region or whatever. And not that I like the region. I like just being our own municipality and being in control that way. But I think as, even as a town, we need to work together and understand that the decisions that are made may not be for all, but it's made in the interest of all. And whatever you try to do, whatever we try to do as a council, as a municipality, is going to be because we've had the input of the people that are living here. And I think that's very important. And I hope that the council that you will elect will be the people that are going to look at what needs to be done and do it, even though it's not what the people might think is, should be done. I guess that's the way I want to say it.
Final question, it's a fun one. If you received a million-dollar grant to use for the town any way you saw fit, any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I have to tell you that for days, that song, "If I Had A Million Dollars," has been running through my head. And I just keep thinking, I spoke with the fire chief and he said, you know, "We need that ladder truck." And I thought, if I had a million dollars, you'd get that ladder truck for sure because, I mean, we're there, we have fantastic volunteers, we have fantastic staff for St. Andrews. I mean, not just the administrative staff, but those guys that are frontline for us that do the public works and all of that stuff, they are great fellows. They're volunteers at the fire department. And I think we couldn't survive, St. Andrews couldn't survive without the volunteers and friends. But I would like to see them have that ladder truck because of the Agonquin Hotel or any other building that we're going to build that's going to be tall, they're going to need it. And yes, we would be sharing one that's 20 minutes away, but in 20 minutes, your house could be gone, you know? And our fire department, I mean, they get there very quickly, I have to say. Even the ambulance attendants are awesome when they're, I mean, I know with my family that it was great, they were there in jig time. And they're paid, but the volunteers on the fire department, I mean, they zoom there, get to the fire, you know, they're fantastic. They're well-trained, they're, you know, whatever, but that's doing to the chief and are the assistant chief, I guess. But they, you know, they're able to take courses and whatnot, and that's support from the town. But if we didn't have our volunteers and our friends and family through tragic times as well as good times, I mean, I've, we've just gone through a tragedy in our family. And I have to say, as a community, St. Andrews is awesome. They pull together whether they know you or not, there's, they have the compassion and, you know, I don't know how I want to say it, but they just support you when you think you have no one, they do. And even that tragedy, you know, they do support you. The second thing I'd like to have, I have to look down on my sheet because I've been rambling on there, is the elevator for the library. I've been fighting for a long time for that elevator for the library. And, you know, you don't think it's a big thing, but I'm on several boards throughout the town, still continue to be on boards, but I've tried to get off them a couple of times, but they just keep me. I don't know why, but the elevator for the library would be an awesome thing, you know, and even the ramp at the back needs to be fixed. I mean, the building is old, but the people are getting older too. But we still read books and we, you know, they take their grandchildren there. And I see the grandchildren going downstairs because they do have stairs, but they can't go down with their grandchildren because they can't manipulate the stairs. So accessibility, I guess, is what I want for a lot of places. We don't need to have it for all places, but the library is one place I think that, you know, we do, we would need. And so my two wishes would be to have an elevator for the library and to have the fire truck for the policeman, for the firemen, not the policeman, but the firemen, especially the fire chief. I'd like to see him have that ladder truck that would be, you know, would save a lot of lives if we had a massive fire in this town. And that would be like in the Water Street, we would need it, so.
Thank you so much, Kate.
Well, thank you very much for having me and I hope everybody gets out to vote.
That was Kate Akeji. Unfortunately, Edie Bishop, who is re-offering for council, was not feeling well enough at the time of the recording for an interview. Our next interview is therefore with Mark J. Blanchard. So Mark, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Sure. Well, first of all, Vicky, I wanted to say how happy I am to be down here at CHCO. The fact that, you know, as a community of our size, the fact that we actually have a community television channel, I think, is amazing. And I think it's just one more example of, you know, all the interesting and unique things about St. Andrews. I also want to give a shout out to Lee and to Kaylee at TV Bingo, CHCO, and to you as well, Vicky, for the news that you guys, that you produce. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
You know, during the lockdown, when we were locked down, there really wasn't a whole lot to do in town. And our family, we really looked forward to Tuesday night. We would order, takeout from downtown and we would, we would watch, we would watch TV Bingo and we had a great time and we really enjoyed it. So we wanted to say thank you to you guys for that. So as far as me and who I am, I'm a dad, I'm a husband. Those are the big things about me. I have a wonderful wife, Allison, and two great kids, Gabe and Clara. Allison and I have, we've lived and worked and raised our family here in St. Andrews for the last 14 years. If you go back even a little bit further, maybe three more years, I actually was working in St. Andrews at that time as well, commuting back and forth to St. John, or from St. John, rather. I started off at the Huntsman and then moved over to the Biological Station. I've been there for about 16, 15 or 16 years now. In terms of our family, well, I think we're pretty typical of most families here in St. Andrews. We like to be outside, hiking and biking in and around town, tennis, volleyball. For those that know us, we are, we are a big volleyball family. It's a big part of what we do, for sure. Allison and I actually joined the Heather Curling Club last, this past winter. That was, that was great, despite all the COVID restrictions, we still had a really good time. I'm also a bit of a musician, I guess, so there's, you know, play the occasional gig around town, so people may see me around there as well. Work-related stuff, you know, being at the station, I had been given the opportunity, afforded the opportunity to have been part of a number of national committees and executive councils, been involved in developing a number of national policies and programs over the years, even involved in some contract negotiations in that time. And what I've found, you know, through those experiences, for me, certainly building consensus, using consensus to sort of build, or building consensus is sort of the process that I find the most effective. Certainly you can't always find consensus and when that happens, you know, sometimes you'll have two views, two opinions that are sort of diametrically opposed. My sort of, the way I approach those situations, I think I always sort of come at it with a thoughtful sort of, even keeled sort of approach. Typically what will happen is I'll, I always try to be the last person to speak is sort of the way I sort of operate. And it's not because I just want to get the last word in, it's, though my kids might, might argue a little bit with that, but, but really it is to hear, I do want to hear all sides. I'm really, the way I sort of like to formulate and sort of work is to really get as much information as possible and take it all in and, like I said, make a thoughtful, informed decision. That's sort of the way I like to do things. And I think, I think that would translate well to, you know, were I elected or to town council, I think that would work well. So in terms of why and what the motivation for me was to put my name forward, really, I think just the fact that we, it really comes down to the fact that we really care about the community and I care about the direction it's going. And this is a way to give back and to contribute to that. So essentially, that's, that's sort of my motivation.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews today?
Well, I think for any small community, you know, there's a, there's a critical mass, I guess, in terms of population. So if we fall below that, you know, all the services and the amenities and the things that, you know, we've come to expect and come to appreciate about the community, I think we start to lose some of those things. So obviously, you know, being able to increase that population level, I think, is important. How do we do that? Well, I think, you know, obviously we need to have jobs and opportunities. I think that draws most people in. And certainly working with the Chamber of Commerce and the BIA, that, that's the way we're going to achieve that. When people do come for those jobs, let's say, they need to have a place to live. So affordable housing, I think, is important. The, certainly I think we need a strategic plan, strategic housing plan. We need to implement something along those lines and not just for, for homeowners, but for long-term renters. I think there's, there's been some work done on this already and it has been identified that there is a deficit in St. Andrews with regards to long-term rental. So that needs to be addressed as well. Climate change and mitigating the effects of climate change, I think, is big, especially for a seaside community like ours, coastal community. The impacts are real and significant. And sort of to dovetail into that, I think there's an opportunity also to green the town infrastructure. I've been involved, a part of the Environmental Advisory Committee for the town of St. Andrews for a little while now. And we've identified a number of programs and I think there's some real opportunities there to, for new jobs, I think, associated with those, some of those programs, but also some real significant savings in terms of energy costs and things like that. So, so those types of things, I think, are important to you. But also at the same time, I wouldn't, I wouldn't profess to be, or profess or say that, you know, my priorities are the priorities of the town. I think those things were important to me and I would advocate for those things at town council for sure. But really to me, it's up to the people who elect you into office to dictate and set the priorities for the community. So I would, you know, depend on the town people for those things.
If you are elected, what are some of the steps you would take to make the community a better place to live?
Well, I think, you know, there are certainly things that you could do. I think my focus would be on council, what I could do there. I think in order for good things to happen in the community, it does kind of start with council in one of two ways. One, we pass motions or make decisions which will facilitate those positive changes, or we decide not to pass motions or not to make decisions that might impede or put up barriers to, you know, for those things to happen. So there's a fine line there. I think with, I think strategic planning, I think, is key in a lot of ways. And not just planning, but building into those strategic plans, goals and timelines, right? So I think, you know, at year one, we want to be here, at year two, we want to be here. And then constantly reviewing those plans, seeing where we are, assessing, you know, are we on track to meet those goals? And if we're not, what can we do to make, make it happen? I think that provides more accountability to the town, to the residents of the town, but it also provides accountability within council. And, you know, it forces us to sort of reexamine those decisions that were made. And again, like a year or two later, maybe, maybe new information has come to light. We need to be flexible and agile enough to sort of make those changes and keep things moving forward. I think those are, those are key things. And at the same time, you know, outside of that, you know, supporting, supporting, you know, the arts community that we have here in town, supporting the academic and the scientific community, the business community, the festivals, all those different things that we have, that mix, that unique mix that we have, which makes St. Andrews such a, to me, a very special place.
We've just over two minutes left. If you received a million-dollar grant for you to use any way you wanted in town, what would you do with it and why?
Well, I honestly, I think that's a question best posed to someone who is actually on council. I think once you're there, you can assess, you can have a better picture, a better assessment of, of where the needs are. So I will reserve my, my answer on that one until, until maybe perhaps May the 11th or May the 12th, depending on how things go. But thank you very much, Vicky.
Thank you so much for being here today. Appreciate it.
Me too. And I, like I said, just would encourage everyone to get out. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And also congratulate, or say good luck to all the other candidates out there. I think it's the high level, the high number of candidates really reflects the high level of engagement here in town and in the process. So I'm excited to be a part of it.
That was Mark J. Blanchard. If you have any questions you'd like to ask elections, New Brunswick, call toll-free at That's 1-888-858-VOTE. Up next, here's our interview with Michael B. Craig. Mike, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Why am I running for council? Well, I just, I know there's a few issues and I just figured that maybe I could be part of the solution.
Any more about your backstory? How were people know you from?
Well, I was on council for 17 years. I was there until 2012 and managed to survive it. Other than that, I don't know. My backstory, I've been here since 1966 in St. Andrews and lived in Shampoke up to that time. So I guess I'm a lifetime resident of this, this area for all intents and purposes.
Can you tell me a little bit, in your opinion, what are the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
The waterfront changes, the wharf, et cetera, et cetera. There seems to be a lot of controversy around that. Of course, you know, price of homes lately, double taxation, it's all in the mix. I don't know if this council per se, or any council, you can't solve that problem yourself. You have to do it by lobbying the province. It has to be in joint effort. Councils just can't drop the taxation rate or, you know, we have, we set the mill rate, but as far as double taxation goes, that's something we'd have to lobby and takes a lot of work. Deer, I think that deer, the deer problems leveled out a lot. There's a better solution to it than killing off deer. Killing is sort of a human folly, I think. But anyway, there's other ways of doing it and needs to be investigated. Barring that, I'm sure there's, there's nuts and bolts problems, everyday problems.
If elected, what are some of the key steps that you would take to make the community a better place?
Well, I was sort of hoping you'd mentioned the I word because like, when you go into the council, if you go in there with the idea that I am going to do anything, well, you're only going to do a portion of it, you're only going to do your part. And it has to be a joint effort. I, I just doesn't work alone.
If you received a million-dollar grant to use in the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Well, let me see. One thing comes to mind, it was mentioned to me, that there's a promising television studio that needs money and you might even be able to buy a more comfortable chair at some point in time with that million dollars. It could also go in one lump sum into the town, back into the town and, you know, down to lower the debt. Our, for instance, our mill rate, when I mentioned the mill rate, I was looking at the budget and our mill rate is up to $1.30 plus. And when I left in '12, it was $1.10 plus. So we've jumped 20% somewhere along the line and not everybody can afford that. So it's something that has to be looked at. We have to, have to be cautious where we spend our money.
That was Michael B. Craig. Our next St. Andrews Town Council candidate sat down with us virtually via Zoom. Here's our interview with Tyler Doherty. Tyler, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Hi, Vicky. Just want to say, first of all, thanks a lot for giving me this opportunity to come on the TV and kind of let everybody know who I am, what I'm all about. So my name is Tyler Doherty and I'm a longtime resident of St. Andrews by the sea. I've lived here since 1991, so that makes me 29, pushing 30. I took a brief break in those 29 years to move to the West Coast for two years after graduating college at NBC St. Andrews. I graduated from the Aquaculture Technician Program. And like many people, something pulled me back home. It's just, it's, it's home and it always will be home. So I'm happy to have the opportunity to serve the community. I feel very passionate about St. Andrews and I really want to do what's best for the town. I believe sitting on council help projects and activities to help move the town forward and kind of help it thrive the way it should be. It's not just the residents of St. Andrews that need representation, it's also the businesses, new and old alike. I believe in due process and I'd like to be able to be on council to make sure that due process happens. I'm a firm believer in democracy and I'd like to see everybody thrive in St. Andrews to the fullest potential. And that's what I have for that answer.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
There's a few issues, there's more than a few issues. I'm just going to try and highlight a couple of key issues that I see. So one issue I find is there's a, there's an issue with the speed limits coming into town on the Bayview Drive side and the Moat Drive side. It's 80 up until the water tower. And I guess, once you go down in by the Bar Road and you come down by the golf course, it changes to 50. But there's a lot of deer that are crossing the road when you hit the water tower on both sides of that road. And, you know, countless times, you know, I grew up just beside Terran Manor and I've seen countless car accidents, countless car accidents. I've seen severely injured deer that lay on the side of the road and they suffer immense pain. DNR now, you know, they're all insanely over to use as a deer, it's very slim. I'd have to help and drag deer off the road when people have hit them and they're still alive. And it's just, nobody wants to see that. So I think that we really need to work together to try and change the speed limit coming into town to make it safer for everybody. I know an issue was when I was growing up, I used to wait for the school bus and cars come flying down over the hill by the Terran Manor. And it's only a matter of time until something really, really tragic happens. And I'd just like to see if we can work together to try and change that. Another concern in regards to safety is sidewalks. The subdivision, as everybody knows, is a growing, bustling little area. And the lack of proper sidewalks is very concerning. If you take Champlain Avenue, Champlain Street Avenue, for instance, there's the new Anchors Landing, the whole way up that road. It's dangerous for kids and adults to be walking up and down that road, whether it be walking their dogs or biking or anything of that nature. And I really think that it would be a wise decision for town to put sidewalks in there, appropriate sidewalks. I feel like the subdivision, you know, it's not, it's not new by any stretch and I believe we should start seeing more infrastructure go down there. And, you know, the idea is we want to grow our town, we need to expand our town, we want to allow for growth. So I believe that if we start to implement proper infrastructure, being sidewalks is a big one, I think that would move things in a great direction. You know, back to me living and growing up in St. Andrews, maintaining the arena is a big one for me. I played hockey all through my younger years and my teenage years. Well, I played until I was 17, but I refereed up until I was 18. You know, hockey was a huge part of my life growing up. Baseball was, rugby was. So I'd like to be able to see us maintain and improve our sports facilities if possible. You know, we have the field that's down by the cemetery, which I feel kind of doesn't really get adequate use. I think that maybe we could try to make it a multi-purpose field and try and entice some sports teams, whether it be, you know, minor baseball or minor soccer. The economy was built, it doesn't get used as much as it should, there's no reason why it doesn't. We've got, you know, we've got, we've got lots of, lots of work we can do on that. You know, my, my most major concern is, I'm sure is a lot of people's, is housing in St. Andrews. I feel that we are facing a housing crisis. And I'm not talking about luxury homes, I'm talking about affordable living homes. I've spoken with business owners and I've spoken with several developers. And the situation, from what I can understand, is really dire, it's not good. Businesses can't hire people because they have to stay. That's going to be a huge issue. It is an issue now, but it's only going to get worse. Developers can't provide affordable living because of outdated town rules. And it seems like this council maybe didn't work with developers as much as they should have. We need to make big decisions of what, of what we want our future to look like in St. Andrews. And I believe we should help incentivize and offer to work with the developers and form a good working relationship. That way we can move forward with that. I've learned from personal experience just how serious the situation is in regards to housing. As some people may know, my partner and I have business issues and we're, we're in Halifax, we'll be returning home next week. But we were faced with a tough decision, like, do we give up our apartment and just hope that there's something available when we come back? Or do we, you know, do we, do we keep the apartment and pay two rents, one in Halifax, one in St. Andrews, so that we have a comfortable place to come home to? We had to face the financial burden and we had to, we had to keep our place in St. Andrews because last night I looked and there is absolutely no rents. We're in the middle of April now, summer's coming. And everybody looking, even with COVID, it is booming. And we need to be able to have places for people to stay. I'm not talking Airbnbs, I'm talking long-term rentals, young professionals, anybody, senior citizens. It's just, it's too hard for a senior citizen to try and find living in this town, affordable living. You know, if you have an elderly couple and one passes away, is it fair to leave one person, look after a graping homestead? It just doesn't work that way. So we need to really focus on growing our town and we need to focus on housing in our town. Because the only way we're going to be able to grow our town is if we have adequate housing for people. I spoke with Deputy Mayor Henderson on the subject and we both share very similar concerns. As many people know, Kingsbury had to purchase a building on Water Street just to house their workers. I mean, that's how bad of a situation we're in, that a company has to buy a house full of apartments to house their workers. So that's a major issue and you can't deny that fact. So yeah, and then I'll move on.
All right. Well, you've got less than two. All right, well, you've got less than two minutes left. So if elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make the community a better place?
Okay, so some of the key steps I would make, take to make the community a better place is, well, the first step I would do is I would encourage all community members to please raise some ideas. Communication is key, you know, we're all in this together. And the literal definition of community is a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests and goals. And it's not just one person, we're all in this together, right? And we want to represent the people and the businesses the best we can. And so being on council is a big responsibility. And as a councillor, it would be my job to bridge the gap between citizens, businesses and local government. I'm a firm believer in due process and democracy. And together I feel like we can all succeed in making St. Andrews better than it already is. My goal is to represent the best interest of St. Andrews as best as possible. And I'm very dedicated and I'm willing to do what's best for St. Andrews. And I just want to say one thing, Vicki, to anybody watching this who wants to know more or just have a chat, you know, my phone line's always open. I've got a Facebook page, Tyler Doherty, First St. Andrews Town Council. My phone number's on there, you can message me directly on Facebook. And if you see me in the street, please don't hesitate to stop. We'll have a discussion, a conversation, you know. I'm an open reach out, thanks.
You've got three seconds. If you had a million dollar grant to use any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I can't really say what I would do with a million dollar grant. I mean, people make false promises all the time, just though, well, what if, what if? I think the only way you can really confidently make a decision with money is with discussion and brainstorming. So as an individual, I would like to come to a table and sit down with people and have a conversation about what we could do with the money. But at the end of the day, it's, it's the council and mayor and deputy mayor's decision on what happens. And so we need guidance from the public on what we need in regards to services, infrastructure, you know, we, we need to know. So let's have a conversation, let's open up a dialogue and let's get it settled.
That's, that was Tyler Doherty. Advance polls are open at the Wesley United Church in St. Andrews between ten AM and eight PM on Saturday, May first and Monday, May third. Up next is Guy Gru. So Guy, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Well, thank you, Vicki. I've been a resident of St. Andrews since two thousand thirteen. I'm retired, so I have time to focus on council issues. I have thirty years of experience in managing and building public infrastructure. I have six years, included in that, I have six years' experience as the chief engineer and the chief of asset management services for Parks Canada, managing and setting policy for eleven billion dollars in infrastructure. I have three years as a senior project manager, constructing over four hundred million dollars of public infrastructure in Quebec and New Brunswick. I have a master's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in business administration. I've been a councillor since two thousand fourteen. And I take my responsibly, my responsibility seriously by being well-prepared for council meetings, listening to my constituents. And as a councillor, I think that the biggest thing I have is I'm there to represent the public, not to forward my own agenda. I take an active role in the community to make St. Andrews a better place. I'm a member of the Kiwanis Club and this year we donated over a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the community. I'm on the board of SORTI, which manages the trail system in town. I wrote the contracts and supervised the construction for a large part of the trail system. I authored the grant applications that have provided the funding for the trail system. I'm the president of Katie's Cove Incorporated, which is a not-for-profit organization dedicated to restoring Katie's Cove. And I'm a volunteer with the Disaster Management Branch of the Red Cross. And I take great pride in being able to help the vulnerable in our community when their need is the greatest. And I also initiated and coordinated the free delivery, free home delivery and the wellness checks in response to COVID. And the number of volunteers that stepped forward really shows that we have a great community. I'm re-offering as councillor because the town is at a critical point in its development with municipal reform, housing, affordability issues. And I feel with my academic background, training and experience, that I can, I have something positive to offer the town.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
I think there are the four most important issues we have facing St. Andrews. The biggest, there's a big one here with fair taxation. Affordability is becoming a real issue in the town of St. Andrews. Data from the annual reports from the province show that residential taxes in St. Andrews have gone up by twenty-seven percent over the last five years, which in my opinion is too much. And we cannot continue at that kind of a rate. And just so people, just if you recall, the amount you pay for taxes is the assessed value of your property times the tax rate. The town has no control over the assessed value that's set by the province. But the town has full control over the tax rate. So the town has the ability to offset the increased property assessments with decreases in the tax rate so that the amount that you pay can stay relatively constant. I am advocating a reduction in the tax rate from a dollar twenty-six to a dollar twenty, or a five percent reduction in the tax rate to offset this significant increase in taxes that people are paying. And with that reduction, the five-year gains would reduce from twenty-seven percent down to twenty-one percent, which is still a significant increase for the town, but it gives the taxpayers a break. I would also advocate that as the assessed values go up in the future, that we keep track of that and we reduce our mill rate or our tax rate so that the average taxpayer only sees about a two percent increase per year. There are some that say that the tax rate in St. Andrews is below the provincial average. But we have to take into account that the assessed values of properties in St. Andrews are some of the highest in the province. And the amount that our taxpayers pay is quite significant. Another issue is housing. Is a recent study done by the Regional, Regional Service Commission indicated there's a shortage of housing, particularly affordable housing in St. Andrews. I have advocated for a short-term rental bylaw that strikes a balance, that would permit short-term rentals where they've never been permitted before, would be respectful for neighbors and adjacent property owners. It would provide a level playing field for the short, the existing short-term rental people, the motels, the bed and breakfasts. It would safeguard the traveling public, but most importantly, it would protect our existing stock of affordable housing. I'm also a strong advocate of affordable housing. And I will continue to work hard on the people's behalf to ensure that the housing needs of all people, from all incomes, is met. The other issue we have is sustainable development. The town is facing a backlog of over sixteen million dollars in infrastructure repairs over the next five years and costs are growing. Council is facing some tough decisions and needs councillors that understand the implications of these decisions. As a civil engineer with an MBA and thirty years of asset management experience, I can be a strong advocate at the council table on your behalf. And the most important issue of all, I've saved the best for last, is municipal reform. The provincial government has announced municipal reform as a priority that will be likely introduced in the legislature this fall. This municipal reform will be complex, involving considerable change and will likely involve amalgamation with neighboring local service districts. This is a significant change that could dramatically alter the shape of St. Andrews on a number of different levels. As a seasoned councillor, with a thorough knowledge of the Local Governance Act, Community Planning Act and other applicable legislation, I can advocate to ensure that St. Andrews gets a fair deal.
If re-elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make this community a better place? We have about three minutes left.
To make St. Andrews a better place, cooperation. The community works best when all elements of the community are working together towards a common vision. A more cooperative approach would make for a better community. Growth, I would focus on growth since growth is the key to our success. Growth in our marine biotechnology sector will bring higher-paying jobs to St. Andrews, more families, more kids in the school. Growth of retirees, we need to promote St. Andrews as a wonderful place to retire. Growth of tourism, we need to grow St. Andrews into a year-round destination. And growth of our business sector, we need to move to more year-round businesses rather than seasonal shops. Infrastructure, while there's a need to grow, to have infrastructure to support this growth. So housing development needs to be encouraged, perhaps adopting a model similar to the subdivision, where we offer town lots at a discount price to attract or entice builders and buyers. We acquire the provincial land within the town limits. We build the municipal infrastructure, grow our municipal infrastructure and develop tourism-related infrastructure. For sustainable development is another big issue, is we are the custodians of the town for future generations. And we must always develop in a sustainable manner. Like we have to carefully manage our debt levels, we have to repair and maintain our infrastructure and keep it in good condition. We have to aggressively seek out funds from other levels of government. And we protect, we need to protect our culture, heritage and environment and the beautiful vistas because these are the reasons why St. Andrews is special.
We have one minute left. If you received a million dollar grant to use in the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
That's a great question. In the last three years, I've applied for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar ACOA grant for the trail, which was approved. A one-point-five million dollar grant for the Van Horn Trail, which will most likely be approved in the short, in the near future. A one-point-two-five million dollar grant to improve broadband connectivity on Water Street and an eleven million dollar grant to address the effects of climate change. A million dollars doesn't go as far as people would expect. What I would do with that million dollars is build a year-round, modern visitor center with year-round washrooms in the downtown core. That would support our tourism industry, provides a good impression of St. Andrews, provides a memorable visitor experience. It'll be used by residents and tourists alike and it increases our capacity to host more visitors. So I would ask on, on the tenth of May, with the advance polls on the first and third of May, I would ask for your support and hope that the people of St. Andrews will cast their ballot for Guy Gru for town councillor. Thank you.
That was Guy Gru. If you want to cast your vote before the advance polls, you can do so at the Municipal Returning Office in St. Stephen at the Holy Rosary Catholic Church Hall located at sixty-three Union Street. Now here's our interview with Kurt Guma Shaw. Tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running again for a council?
Thank you, thanks, thanks Vicki. And first of all, let me say thanks to you and all the volunteers here at CHCO for giving this opportunity to myself and the other candidates. There's a lot of candidates and so this hopefully will help everybody sort through things. Thanks to you and everybody here for all you do to make, to make, make our community a better place to live. I'd also like to thank the other candidates who have raised their hand to help, to come forward and volunteer to help make St. Andrews a better place to work and live and, and raise a family. A little bit about me would be to say that I grew up here down, down on Water Street and playing down in the mud on the beach and I never left. In fact, every chance I get, I'm back down on the beach playing in the mud, so I'm still doing that. It's a great place to, to grow up and, and live and call home. As far as coming forward to council, I guess the single issue that got me involved in was, first and foremost, was trails and trail development. I'd made a number of presentations to the previous council about trails. And at one of the last presentations, Stan Chopdiani, the mayor, said, you should probably run for council. And I thought, oh, no, I'm probably not going to do that, but here, here I am. So I guess you might say that I ran for council originally to promote and develop trails. And that, that's kind of why I'm, I'm still here. There's still lots of work to do in that regard. On the subject of trails, I'm filled with pride and satisfaction when I go out running or biking on the trails and I see, I see kids on bikes. St. Andrews has certainly set a standard for seaside trails in the province of New Brunswick. And there's, there's lots left to do. Trails build community and every time I get out on the trail, I feel a sense of gratitude, both to the town of St. Andrews for sharing in that, that vision and also with, to the Kiwanis Club who are instrumental in, in getting the trails going in, in St. Andrews. Even though this past council was able to tackle a large number of files and difficult issues, there's still lots to do. So even after five years, I feel invigorated and refreshed and ready to work with others to situate St. Andrews as a success story in the coming decades. Just like, just like many others in town, just like many other people in town, I'm not a big fan of change, but change is coming and we really do need to change just to maintain kind of what we have here in town. So that's, that's a bit about me and what's brought me to council.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
I, I think the most important issue facing St. Andrews right now is, is the need for growth, population growth, economic growth. Again, to, to maintain what we have, not to necessarily grow bigger, but just to stay the, the size we are and maintain all the things we have. I, I don't want to necessarily live in a, in a bedroom community, like I don't want to, you know, have to go to St. John's shop or, or St. Stephen. I want to be able to do those things right here. So living in a, living in a community means you have, you know, a bank, a post office, a pharmacy, a police station, a medical center, and we have all those things right here. But in order to keep those things, I think we need to, to grow our, our little economy and we also need to get new people to come here and stay. And there've been lots of people come with, with COVID, but to retain them into the future so that we, we can basically stay, stay the same. Thanks.
If elected.
There's one other issue that's facing our, our community that I'd like to speak to and that's accessibility. I think that Nova Scotia is a leader in this regard right now. People who come and visit St. Andrews should be able to experience all the wonderful things that we have here in town, regardless of any disabilities they might have. That, that includes getting into the shops downtown, being able to go down to the beach. All those things should be, should be thought out ahead, ahead of time and planned. For example, the, the new bird, the bird viewing platform that they're putting down at the, at the water treatment plant. Hopefully that would build some of the momentum to, to get St. Andrews to think in more, more progressive ways about accessibility. I certainly think that we can, we can do a lot in that regard without, without changing the look and feel of the town, town and, and the rest of the town. For example, easy, easy fixes would be paving the trails at, at the Block House or at Centennial Park. Those are, those are really easy things we could do to make, to make the town more accessible to, to more people.
If elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make the community a better place?
Well, I think if elected, the first, the first order duty will be to, to work with the other councillors. And having the experience of one term under my belt, I think the greatest, the greatest thing a, a new council can do is to build itself into a team. You can't have an effective team if you have a few people around the table with a bone to pick on one particular issue or a couple of issues. Or, you know, people who tend to go on social media and complain about things. Those days are kind of gone. You can only have an effective team when everybody understands what their role, well, everybody's working towards a common goal. Everybody understands what their roles and responsibilities are and everybody is, is working together. It's, it's kind of like the hockey playoffs are coming up and it's not necessarily the team with the best players that's going to win the Stanley Cup or whatever. It'll be the, it'll be the team that, that works together the best. So I think that there's some lessons in that for the new town council and a lot of time spent figuring out what it is that everybody wants to do. And a path to get there would be, would be time well spent.
Got about three minutes left. If you received a million dollar grant to do anything you wanted in town, what would you do with it and why?
Well, after five budgets, I know there's no free million dollars showing up. All the, all the monies that the town has granted is hard, hard fought for. This staff and the councils work hard to, to, to get those sorts of monies. But if there was a, a free million dollars that didn't have any strings attached, like didn't need to go to aging infrastructure or, or to, to asset management or to service debt, for that matter, if we just had a million bucks. I think that, I think that we, we would nicely complement the wharf by installing a marina that would have gas down there that would make it easier for people to get to the wharf and stay and, and experience St. Andrews. If we had a second million dollars, I'd, I think you could get a lot of the accessibility issues that I, that I spoke to earlier could be addressed. And finally, if we had just a million dollars with no, you know, whatever, I think the, the high school field would be nicely turfed with AstroTurf and, I mean, good schools need good playing fields and those fields should be open to, to the public, so. So that's, that's what I would do with the million bucks. I guess I need three or four million bucks.
Thank you so much for being here today, Kurt.
Okay.
That was Kurt Gummichal. Your next St. Andrews Town Council candidate for consideration is Lee Heenan. Lee, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Well, first, Vicky, I would like to say a big thank you to you for taking the time out of your very busy schedule to interview all us candidates. I understand there are 15 candidates. So if you spend a half hour with each of us, prep time, et cetera, it takes a lot of your day, so I'm greatly appreciated of that. Well, my name is Lee Heenan. I'm running for council in St. Andrews. My background is a varied background. I come from retail management. I was a manager for almost 17 years for a chain of stores, which allowed me to do budgeting, it allowed me to do advertising, et cetera. I worked with the Department of Tourism, which was my most interesting career I think I ever had, because that's what made me fall in love with St. Andrews, is I was able to spend a whole month here with journalists from all over the United States. And so I fell in love with St. Andrews then. I've worked for 20 years at the University of New Brunswick in marketing and administration, and that is where I retired from. I came here three years ago on a clean slate to start my life over again, and I've never regretted one bit of it. I sit on a number of boards. One of them is the Charlotte County Hospital Foundation Board, which I'm very pleased to be sitting on. I was elected on that board with my qualifications by our present council. So I'm very happy. That's, that's a job, not a job. That's a career I really like, so I enjoy that. And I'm the only representative for St. Andrews. You know me, Vicky, from being here at Bingo for a number of months. So I like it here at CHCO. I sit on a number of church boards here in town. I was on the Archives Board, which I withdrawn from simply because of conflict of interest for running here, but I still hold them very dear to my heart. I'm a people person. So that is one of the reasons I think that I would like to run for council. I would like to be considered to be the voice for the people and an ear for the people. I would like to find a balance between preserving the heritage of our town and making our town prosperous.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews today?
Well, the, the most important issue facing St. Andrews right now, the key to this question is right now. Well, as we know, we are in the midst of a global pandemic. And I know from talking to some businesses and business owners, keeping a bottom line in the black in the confines of COVID is very hard and very serious. We need to be able to work as a town and to be successful with our limited audiences, like geographically limited. We must maintain our tax base. I feel that is very important for this town, to maintain our tax, tax base, and this includes working with all levels of government to make sure our town receives the benefits that are allotted to us.
If you are elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make our community a better place?
Key steps to a solid community, in my opinion, is communication and transparency. Transparency does get overworked in society and in economics and things, but it really is true. We have to be transparent. People have to know what is happening in their town. It's just a recent example. I had people know, ask me how they, I found out that there was a boil water in St. Andrews. I said, "I signed up on the website." Really? They didn't know about this. I've gotten like four people to sign onto the website, and now they're receiving the notices. So to me, that's transparency. You make people aware. I know it's difficult, but you have to make people aware. I would like to offer all residents to be heard and considered equally. I would like to offer the residents of St. Andrews a voice that would be heard. I would like to participate in new tourism developments, to offer to visitors and to residents. I would like to work on making heritage properties in our town, which we have some beautiful ones, more vital in the community and more involved with the residents of the community.
Okay, you have less than five minutes left. One final question. If you received a million-dollar grant to use in the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Okay, Vicky, this is my favorite question. One million dollars on a personal level is a lot of money. One million dollars for a town wouldn't pave Water Street. But if I was able to get one million dollars to do something in this town and got the million bucks, I would love to have a new Vic, Visitors Information Center. When I worked for Tourism New Brunswick and spent time here with media clients, it was the missing piece. I would create a center with a play park for weary children, an exercise area for dogs, Wi-Fi in the center so folks who drop by can check their reservations, et cetera, have washrooms available, and perhaps even a coffee shop. I would include in the plan a car charging station as electric cars are becoming more regularly used in the future, and this will be in need. I feel your best foot forward. So I do feel a visitor information center is where we show our town off, and then people can go from there. But I find it something that we really do need.
Thank you for your time, Lee.
Thank you, Vicky. I appreciate it.
That was Lee Heenan. For information on how to vote by mail in 2021 New Brunswick municipal elections, visit the Vote By Mail section on electionsnb.ca. And now here's our interview with James Morgan-Hertl. So James, tell me about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Well, first, I would want to say thanks so much for the opportunity to come here and to speak. Like, with COVID-19 and everything, this is such an, an exciting time to be part of the process, and also, you know, to, to give this chance to connect to the people too has been great. So about myself, you know, my family first moved to the area more than 40 years ago, partially for my dad to further his career in aquaculture. He worked for Connors for a long time, and partially to raise two boys in, in one of the most amazing communities that there, that there is. You know, and I was raised in St. Andrews during a time that a lot of us, I think, think back on as a sort of a golden era for St. Andrews, right? And those memories that I formed in those times, you know, I've always carried with me throughout my life and have always brought me back here. Whenever my, you know, schooling took me out of town and took me to Halifax, you know, I was thankful enough to be able to come back and work for some of those summer student programs in town here, you know. And as my career in the financial industry took me further away from Halifax and then to Toronto, you know, that ember, that love for this town is what kept bringing me back, you know, time and time again. So, you know, a lot of people have those golden memories of this town, and it's what keeps them coming back here, you know, like myself. This is a community that has a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And I think sometimes it's those differences which I feel are starting to pull each other apart, but it's really the magic of what this town is that pulls its all together again, you know. And it's my love for this community that, that makes me want to give back. So I'm running because I think I have a, a unique perspective. You know, I, I grew up in this town, so I, in a time period that a lot of us fondly think about. So I, I'm aware of the, the aesthetics and the, the history and some of the things that we need to preserve in this town. And at the same time, I also moved here in the last few years, so, you know, and had a bit of a career pivot in the middle of that too. So I know some of the challenges that face some of the families that, that are trying to move here and, and get themselves established too. So I have those two unique views.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews today?
Yeah, well, St. Andrews is really at a crossroads, and it has been for some time. And I actually think that, that we're running out of time, which is again, one of the reasons that prompted me to get involved. You know, we really have to make a decision. And primarily, I think that the, the biggest issue facing us is deciding what we want to be, you know. I think that, you know, as I mentioned before, a lot of people have a fear of change in this town. And rightly so in some senses, because their, their love of this town is connected to a memory of what brought them here in the first place. And sometimes change can be threatening to that memory, right? So they're, they might be afraid. But, you know, if we resist and we oppose change, the only thing that we're going to get from that is change that we don't want. So we have an opportunity now to, to plan for the future. And how do we set the right foundation that not will only see us through COVID, but will see us through the next year, five, 10, 15, 20 years and into the future so that many people can share the experience that I had, which is to come to this town and to, to set up a family and a life here? You know, COVID-19 has been, I think, a horribly exhausting experience for so many of us. You know, and I think that in the next few months, it might get worse. So we, we need to have a community that can pivot and keep people safe and be flexible. But at the same time, this is presenting an opportunity for our community too, you know. There's so much excitement and so much energy and so much enthusiasm directed to us right now. We have an opportunity to do something with that, you know. We have to make a plan. We need to direct that energy ourselves or it'll be directed for us, you know. So how do we encourage people to stay once the pandemic has passed? How do we get people to stay beyond the weekend or beyond the summer or beyond the two years that some people can only stay here before, before their career takes them elsewhere again, you know? How do we adapt new business models? How do we support businesses in doing what they need to do? They have so many great ideas as it is. So how do we just remove obstacles and let them do those things? But also, how do we balance that growth with, with the aesthetic things that we need to preserve in this town as well? You know, the beauty and the history of our town. How do we create safer spaces for people to get out and experience them? You know, how do we encourage more than just summer weekenders, but for people to be here and live here and thrive here? I think also we've noticed that we're falling into the risk of, of almost politics of resentment, right? A, a lot of us have tuned in to a lot of the council discussions for a long time. We've seen a lot of negativity and sometimes objecting to things just for the sake of, of, of objecting to things. And that, that rhetoric can influence us all in all walks of life. You know, we can argue and resist and compromise ourselves right into the ground, but with, you know, the bravery and optimism, and we can come together and make the right decisions for this community.
If elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make this community a better place?
Sure. You know, in this community, we already have so many great ideas. We can see from the current election that we have the gift of an engaged town, and we need to listen to the people, the people that are struggling here. You know, I would listen to business owners, what, what do they need? We have a housing crisis in this community as well that we need to look at. How do we balance that against new ways of doing things in the new gig economy, right? How do we stop people from being opposed against each other? But how does the town open up those opportunities for them too? You know, we can, you know, traffic is also building. How do we make a more walkable community for those who can? And for those who can't, how do we make a more accessible and convenient community for them as well? So there's lots of opportunities for us to look at.
We have about four minutes left, so take your time with this. What if you like? If you received a million-dollar grant to use for the town in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Well, you know, honestly, I think a, a council person would be the, the wrong person to spend that money. I think that there are so many already great ideas that exist in, in this town. We have such an engaged populace here, business owners and people. And, and like I mentioned, a lot of people have been struggling over the last 15 months in a lot of ways, right? So if we have money to spend, are, are people surviving in our community? That's the most important thing. And if they are, then how do we encourage them to thrive? You know, we need to look at, are there ways to, you know, encourage a population density in the area, but maintain the aesthetic quality at the same time? And if not, you know, how do we expand the city to, 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 in ways that do the same thing? You know, if we're looking at the town, we've also had so many reports done on traffic, on environment, on housing. You know, why aren't we putting any of these things into practice, right? So if we have the money to spend on these things, you know, hypothetically, let's start doing it. Let's get the money to the people that can use it.
So thank you so much for joining me today.
Thank you very much yourself.
That was James Morgan-Hertl. If you plan to cast your vote on Election Day, Monday, May 10th, you can do so between 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the Wesley United Church in St. Andrews. And now here's our interview with Kevin W. Kylie. Tell us about yourself, Kevin. Why are you running for council and what's your backstory?
Okay, thank you very much, Vicky. I graduated from Sir James Dunn Academy, our local high school, back in the 70s. So it wasn't yesterday in, in terms of what I was doing. But I have been back in St. Andrews for about 27 years. Were able to come back. And fortunately for me, I was able to teach at Sir James Dunn Academy for more than half of my teaching career. So in fact, I even got to teach with some of the teachers that taught me for the first couple of years that I was there. So I, I really enjoyed that and had a lot of good times there. I served a couple of terms on council previously, and I enjoyed my, my time when I was there. I served as Chair and Co-Chair of the Finance and Administration Area when I was there. I also served time on the Planning Advisory Committee, the PAC, and I'm glad to see that that's returning to St. Andrews as it's been away in, in the Southwest District for a while. And as there, I was a council liaison. I was Vice Chair and Chair as well. My wife and I have been past foster parents for about 25 years. And part of what we did was we have a provincial board called the New Brunswick Foster Family Association. And I was, served there as a director, but I also served as its president. And part of the role in being president was that you got to interact and liaison with government officials, as well as working even with the minister, at the minister's level and stuff, advocating for, for the needs of foster parents. So I enjoyed that as, as much as well, too.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
There are a number of, of issues, and there always is. And sometimes you'll, will find that council actually is, is a, is a group that goes after something. And sometimes we find that, that that falls into your lap. For example, when the Wharf burned a number of years ago, that was not planned by council, and all of a sudden, they had to deal with that and so on and so forth. So right now, I, I think one of the things is I continue to hear a buzz about the housing issues. Now, if, if I, memory serves me correctly, back when we served on council, there also were housing issues and concerns, having families being able to come and afford homes in St. Andrews. And at that time, up in what we now know as our subdivision, there was houses on Demont and some houses on Cemetery Road. And our council was instrumental in then going and blowing out what we now know as our subdivision. And actually, that's one of the things from my previous times on council that I'm most proud of, is that we had, we were able to open up lots. And again, we just looked at cost recovery, so we didn't charge. So we had a lot of younger families who wanted to start and have a home, other people who maybe couldn't afford places in, in the town plat could come at least be part of St. Andrews. And now down there, there's over 90 homes in that area. So I'm, I'm very pleased about that. And, and so I'd like to continue to see what we can do to, to help with specific needs. St. Andrews is not going to become landlords, you know, in, in terms of what we do, but what can we do to advocate and help like we did previously? The other issue that I see that, that I'm concerned about is the Green Paper on municipalities and amalgamation. And I really firmly believe that there are changes coming down the road. I noticed the premier saying that it's still under all, you know, negotiation now, and we're still just listening to people. But I also know that he, he mentioned the fact that Nova Scotia only has 50 jurisdictions as far as governance goes, and yet in New Brunswick, there are many, many more. So you kind of get the feeling that he's looking to be, actually be able to, to reduce that. And here for St. Andrews, we need to be careful, because I imagine we're looking for amalgamation with our local service districts, which would be Bayside, Bochabek, Shamcook. And again, that means that extra money comes in on the tax base. But what does that mean for St. Andrews in terms of council representation? What does it mean for the ability of us to provide services? What kind of services? For example, our fire department right now actually is funded by the province to provide services beyond the boundaries of St. Andrews. And we're able to manage that. But, but I'm really concerned about that. So borrowing on my time before of actually working with government and working with officials, then, you know, I, I think we're going to need to be really out there negotiating with governments to, to do that. So those are sort of two issues that I see. One that, that sort of is internal, the other may be coming upon us. So I think expertise and experience is needed there.
If you are elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make this community a better place?
Take a little different answer to that. For the most part, I think we are already doing a lot of great things in St. Andrews. Longtime residents, we all know that. Those who came a few years ago began to appreciate that. And And so I really think that what we need to be careful of is that we watch what we change and how we change it. And I like to say that we need to filter change through the lens of what makes St. Andrews, St. Andrews. So I'm not against change. I know that it happens. As a little boy, I can remember going to the grocery stores, O'Neills and Stinson's. Now we shop at the Save Easy, the Independent. I can remember putting little tabs in milk bottles and putting them out on the on the front step. And St. Andrews Dairy would come along and and take those and put the fresh milk out on your step. We don't do that anymore. And I know they're minor changes, but I know that that we do changes. I'd like to use one example as, and this is hypothetical. It isn't in there, but it's just for illustrative purposes. The idea that the traffic study was done. And let's say there was a recommendation in the traffic study that said there should be a traffic circle at the corner of Parr and King. Because we've got community college traffic coming in in the morning. We've got residents coming in. We've got school people coming up King. So let's put a traffic circle in there and that would help in morning and afternoon for for, you know, issues and problems. All good in in some communities. But in St. Andrews, the loyalists put that grid system in so that we have all of those beautiful square blocks that many people love to roam and walk through our town. And so even though the experts would say that might be a good thing, having knowledge of St. Andrews, that's taking that filter and making sure that that we filter our changes through what's made us special and and what we've been able to do in the past.
Now we've got just under three minutes left for our final question. If you received a million dollar grant to use for the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Okay, found money is is always a good thing. And in a sense, that's what it is. Two, two quick ones. Number one, I'd like to see us continue to work on the restoration of Katie's Cove. I'd like to see a lot of that money poured into that. When I was on council before, I was on the Liaison Committee with the hotel and with with the town. And in terms, and at that time, when the community had sort of rallied around it and had really sort of repaired the gates, had opened it up again. At that time, we were offering swimming lessons. You know, we had staff there. We had the buildings now torn down, but we had adequate changing rooms, washing facilities, and even a little canteen type thing. And and so I would like to see us be able to 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 bring that back. Because that benefits both our tourism and it also benefits our ability to meet townspeople and have them go up and and to use that. When I was in high school, we had canoe rentals and boat rentals. You could rent a canoe and go canoeing around the cove and and things like that. So I'd like to see us really restore that. The second one is the Old Town Dump Site. And if you're not familiar where that is, that is where the statue, the engraved statue is that we have down by the by the point. I see a lot of people, tourists and visitors and even townspeople go down. They'll have a picnic and the tables will be out there. And they'll draw them, bring them all down where the trees are so they can shade them and and have shade and stuff. So I'd like to see us put some picnic shelters out, just, you know, roofing type things that allow, you know, sun type of thing. I'd like to see us maybe put some observation decks out around the point, like out by the water where people could stand and and watch and look. And maybe improve the mobility issues a bit down there for better pathways and and things for people with mobility to be able to to work through and and to do that.
All right, well, thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you.
That was Kevin W. Kylie. If you are a first time voter who needs to be added to the voters list, identification will be required at the polls. Now here's our interview with Troy Lyons. Troy, tell us about yourself. What is your backstory and why are you running for council?
Well, I grew up in Bathurst, New Brunswick. And after graduating from high school, Bathurst High, I went to Nova Scotia post-secondary to the Nova Scotia Agriculture College, where I attained my Bachelor of Science in Agriculture. After that, I moved out west, gained experience after a degree, and worked at the University of Alberta in research and in industry and research. And after five years there, I I came back to the Maritimes and came to St. Andrews and did my my graduate work at the Biological Station. And after spending five years here, a couple contracts with with DFO, term positions, and and one with Huntsman, I moved up north and I began work with Department of Environment in Fredericton in 2006. And after that, I returned back to the area in Sherlock County and moved to Oak Bay in 2015. And and last year, moved back to St. Andrews. So that's pretty much my backstory in a nutshell.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews today?
Well, I think there's several. And not that not that council hasn't done a good job and they have. But there's there's several issues that have been certainly highlighted over the course of the last little while. Certainly, certainly one is the pandemic and COVID-19 and how to, I guess, balance safety for our residents and and our tourists, the people that visit our community. And balancing that with the, for our businesses so they they have an opportunity to, I guess, to minimize the impact to our business community. That's certainly one. Housing has certainly been brought up. And certainly that is an certainly that is an issue. A third, I'd like to state that is safety. Not only safety with respect to COVID-19, but safety on our streets, pedestrian safety really. And it has to, and there's a lot of ways of of addressing that and mitigating that. I believe it was last year, there was a Transportation Master Plan that was that was put out by the town. And so there's issues that you can address that by many different ways. And and the fourth, of course, being an environmental biologist, is climate change. We've seen, of course, the things we've had to do with the the town wharf. And of course, that has to be, changes made there to address the climate changes as far as sea water rise and storm surge. But also, blue-green algae is certainly an issue. And there's others as well. So those are the four main things I would suggest. There are others, and I'm sure that it'll be brought up by other candidates and council members. And I'm very accustomed to to working with others as I work as a civil servant and work with a team of with four or five others every day. So council will bring forward other ideas and it's to work with them to to define a solution.
If elected, what are some of the steps you would take to make the community a better place?
So certainly one thing, and I mentioned it, it was number three with respect to pedestrian safety. Not to minimize the other ones. But I think that's that's an area where we can have the large impact. And there's, and there is a Transportation Master Plan out there, as I mentioned. The the town, as you know, is a is a walking town. You can certainly walk anywhere and a lot of people do. So, you know, currently in St. Andrews, the speed limit is 50 kilometers an hour coming in. There is 40 kilometers zone certainly down at the point and Cedar Lane, Joe's Point. So one way of addressing that is certainly possibly reducing the speed limit somewhat. There's been, certainly it's widely known in in research anyway, that reducing speed limits from 50 to 40 results in a reduction in the the impact as far as injury or fatalities. And for example, when you when you remove the speed limit from 50 to 40 kilometers an hour, the incidence of fatalities goes down from 85 to 30. So it's 55%, almost half. So that's a significant reduction, of course. There's other ways of addressing it as well. Certainly sidewalks is is one of them. And that is in the threat, the master plan. But of course, it it takes money to do that. And, you know, perhaps as we as we build a, you know, a street or two a year, in the meantime, maybe we reduce speed limits. Or there's a possibility of four-way stops is one way, one-way streets is another way. Like I said, there's several ways that's outlined within the master plan that that I'd like to explore. I've read through it and don't necessarily agree with all of it, but there's certainly some good ideas in there. And so that's one thing I'd like to open up and take a look at to improve the safety. Because I think we have a responsibility as a council to protect the safety of our our citizens, our children walking to and from school, residents walking their dogs, and of course, the people that visit our community, the tourists. And and at current, on most streets, there is a, the pedestrians and and vehicle traffic share the road. And not everybody falls a speed limit too. So some people, if they're going 60, the incidence actually increases to vitality up to 95%. So so, you know, in the meantime, maybe before we, once we get sidewalks in place, maybe you can can go back to 50. But in my opinion, and it may be best in the meantime to reduce that so that that safety is realized.
Just under three minutes left. If you received a million dollar grant to use for the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Well, that's a relatively easy one. Reason I say that is is I expressed four different areas as far as where I felt there could be improvements. And three of those unfortunately take more than a million dollars to do or have any impact. But for the most bang for the buck, if you will, I would suggest start to build sidewalks and and to triage those ones and see which ones would be most important. And, you know, as time maybe over the course of of this this term, we may have be able to to add sidewalks to areas where there's the most potential for for dangerous pedestrians.
All right. Thank you so much, Troy.
Thank you.
That was Troy Lyons. Before we move on to the next candidate, CHCL would like to remind you that our interviews with the St. Andrews mayoral candidates, Brad Henderson and Doug Naish, appear in a special election episode of Your Town Matters currently airing on CHCL. Next, here's Ryan McFatter. So Ryan, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
So my name's Ryan McFatter. And we, my family and I consist of my wife, Lindsay, and my my seven-year-old, Isla, and my five-year-old, Maura. And we we moved here a year ago this month, actually. So grew up in Ontario. And my wife and I did, and Isla was born there. And then we moved out to Alberta for five years in 2013 and experienced the the oil patch side of things out there and whatnot. And actually ended up starting with a company called Westland. And I relocated to St. John for work. Just about every East Coast person that we met in Alberta, which makes up probably half the workforce out there, always just spoke so highly of the East Coast and and how they couldn't wait to move home and and that kind of thing. And whether it be PEI or Nova Scotia or or New Brunswick. So when the opportunity came to relocate to work in St. John, we kind of jumped at it. We, growing up on Georgian Bay in in Ontario, we missed being on the water too, so. And then we lived in Chris Pampas for a year. And we found ourselves coming over to visit Ministers Island and then exploring the wharf here and the blockhouse and fell in love with St. Andrews. And and so that's, we ended up buying the house here last last April. And it's been an interesting year for everybody and especially to move to a new place during a pandemic. But I mean, the the community is amazing here and and the people are so wonderful. We've we've developed stronger relationships in a year being here than we did in the last place that we lived. And even Ontario, too, is not as as social as we find it here. So when this opportunity came up, it's a little bit outside of my comfort zone, but but such a strong sense of community and an opportunity to try and help make it a better place for us all is kind of what what stuck out, so.
I know you're new to town, but in your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews today?
Right, so I've got a couple that that I wanted to bring up. And these are ones that we've either seen for ourselves or or even I was blown away with just going around to get the the signatures for my candidacy and how excited everybody was and how open they were about, hey, you know, like, mention this or mention that. And one of the biggest things for us is, and particularly on the street, Charles Street that we live on, is is trying to trying to increase efforts at calming the traffic speeds, I guess, within town. And on our street specifically, and I know that others have mentioned other streets within town, but with the hill going downhill, there's a tendency for people to to get moving pretty quick. And with us having little kids and and there's a lot of of blocking traffic on the streets and whatnot. We've actually started parking one car on the road and having a neighbor park one on the other side to try and bottleneck people and slow them down a bit. So so that's one thing for sure that we that I'd like to to bring up. And 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 other people have mentioned that it's been ongoing for 10 years or whatever the case is. So that's that's one for sure. Another another note that I've heard from other people mentioned is is looking at the possibility of having the Van Horn Trail maintained year round so that it can be utilized for walking and pets and just walking in general in the in the wintertime for the permanent residents. And it's an excellent source of exercise and fresh air and and goes hand in hand with mental health and all of those challenges that we're all facing right now. And another one, I actually got an email this morning. So I guess the elections end B site's working already. And the the couple had talked to my wife in Centennial Park about looking at revisiting, I guess, having a dog park opened within city limits. I guess it was proposed back in 2012. They actually sent me the whole presentation. So that's something that that I'd like to to bring up for discussion. Again, it's a good place for dogs to be able to be off-leash and for those people that aren't comfortable with that to not have to worry about it.
If you are elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make the community a better place?
So for me, the biggest thing is 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 I manage a company within within St. John and I manage a company out in Alberta and I've also worked in management in in Ontario. And the getting things done kind of side is is my strong suit, for sure. And so I I'm happy, I'm excited about the opportunity to listen to what everyone has to say and and all the ideas that are going to come to the table and then help sort through those and and make them happen. Make make whatever we can happen and be part of that and and set that example for my for my kids. And and just, like I said, the the opportunity to take part in council in a smaller town where you actually feel like you can make a difference and make things happen is is what I'm excited about.
Now we have about four minutes of time left. Last question. If you received a million dollar grant to use in the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
So this this question is an interesting one. For me, having not been part of town council before, I wouldn't, I don't want to come right out and say, here's what I'd do with a million dollars, you know? So what I would like to do with that question is I I look forward to the opportunity of of having a town discussion and having that town hall and and going through that with everybody to see what what is would be the best use of the funds and and then making it happen. Like I said, that's the biggest thing for me is I don't, my wife's super great at relaying social comments to me and whatnot from the community. She's she seems to be a bit more active that way, and that's what I'm trying to lean towards. But she's been a great resource for me in in trying to bring those discussions to to light with everybody. So, yeah, so that's that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you for joining me today.
Thank you very much.
That was Ryan McFatter. Your next St. Andrews Town Council candidate is Casey Murray. Tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Well, my name is Casey Murray. I am 19 years old. To the best of my knowledge, I'm the youngest person running. I came here for the trade school. I came here, I took the Hotel and Restaurant Operations Course. I practically immediately fell in love with the town. And I decided this is where this is where I want to spend a good chunk of my life. And so I'm here. As far as I know, I'm here to stay until you run me out of town. And then that that's my, that's sort of my backstory.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
Well, having been a student at the school, one of the biggest things, housing. Whether it's affordable housing or just housing in general. There's not much of it. I had, there's three people. First day of school, they showed up and they had to drop out, couldn't find a house to rent. out, couldn't find a house to rent, or the ones that were, were just so overwhelmingly expensive. So affordable housing, but really just housing in general. There's not a lot of space in St. Andrews. And the other thing, it's not so much St. Andrews as it is New Brunswick as a whole, but we need to keep our youth here, you know? They're getting like 200 students a year at the school. Why can't we sort of root them down here in St. Andrews? Why do they want to go to Moncton or St. John or Toronto and, and Montreal? What can we do? And that, that's, that's really what I want is keep them here.
If elected, what are some of the key steps you'd take to make the community a better place?
Well, if I were elected, of course, the two things that I want to focus on is, is your housing and anything to do with youth, whether it's, one thing I would love to have is more sort of inclusive isn't the right word, but just events that almost cater to the younger people, events that could, I don't even care if it's a curling bahn spiel or a baseball weekend, just something, but to really sort of push it towards the college, push it towards the teenagers, the people in their early twenties, get them. And the other thing is I would love to see more, I would love to see some sort of housing subsidization, just to, once again, to relieve this burden of these huge, huge amounts of rent that people need to pay if they can even find a place, find, find somewhere to live in the first place. And so that's really what's sort of bringing me towards council is, I mean, I have ideas, everybody has ideas, and I would just love to see if I can just put my ideas on the table. I think every, everybody deserves a voice and I think I'm a sort of an underrepresented generation. As it is, really, there's no, there's very little youth on the, on councils anywhere in New Brunswick, anywhere in politics across Canada, really. And so I think if I can get, just, just even having my face on that council seat, just so everybody else from, you know, that 15 to 30 zone just sees somebody and says, hey, look, that guy's kind of my age, that's somebody I can, easy to bring my points to. Because a lot of people have issues with, with communicating with that sort of an age gap. And so I think if I can get my face out there as, you know, I'm a young guy, I'm youth just like you, and have their, have their backs, somebody needs to have their backs. And I sort of think that's, that's the key things I'll do.
Now, you have up to five minutes for the last question, so take as long as you want. If you received a million dollar grant to use for the town any way you thought it, what would you do with it and why?
Well, something else I would like to see is almost another subdivision. I think as, as it sort of is at the moment, St. Andrews is kind of running out of space. There's nowhere in town really that still has development opportunity. The subdivision's pretty well full. And so I think just the rest of the, just the rest of the spaces around town, I would like to see if that could be sort of purchased and cleared and perhaps sold at a, at a maybe little under market average to, just to encourage people to come. I'm not saying give it away like McCadam, you know, with, with her Dollar Land, but just something to maybe sell at like 10 or 20% under market value to encourage people to build, to give us more space. In the, in the same sense is, a lot of young people want a movie theater, is something that people love. We have a movie theater, so I would, I would love to be able to support them more, make that more of something that actually has, you know, regular movie times. I mean, of course, COVID screws everything up, but beforehand, they, they didn't have movies there terribly often. And I think that'd be something that a lot of youth would appreciate because even St. Stephen and St. George doesn't have, as far as I know, St. John is your nearest movie theater. So it'd be, it'd be wonderful if we could have movies here because that would also attract business from St. George and St. Stephen because nobody wants to go all the way to St. John to, to watch a movie. In a similar light, I don't know, everybody I talked to wants bowling. I don't know, I don't know how I could get that here. I don't know, I, I don't even know where to start, but I, I love to bowl. Everybody I know loves to bowl. They used to have a bowling alley here in town and everybody says, oh, I wish we had a bowling alley. So I, I think that'd be a, one really nice thing to have would be a bowling alley. And then just any sort of, of community involvement throughout the town, you know, whether it is, once again, like subsidizing sporting fees so for young participation. And even like the children, you know, like you're, you're five to 16. Yes, we have the play park, but I mean, is there anything else more that we can bring for them? And I would love to, to be able to, to support the, the young children as well as the youth. I, I don't mean to speak against, you know, seniors or middle-aged people, but there is stuff, you know, for them. And another, the last thing I would like to have is just new businesses, is, is any way that I could encourage new businesses to come to town because there's more job opportunities. But it would be wonderful if, if St. Andrews were almost self-sufficient. You know, there, there's very few spots in St. Andrews to, to get like regular clothing. Yes, there's places that have some more higher-end stuff, but just, you know, a regular old pair of dungarees and a pullover, you, you can't get that here in town. And then to get a pair, even, oh, I've lost where I'm going with that. But then, you know, and same, all that stuff, you need to go to St. John and just, yes, you need to have the cities for your big things. Like nobody, I don't expect to be able to come and buy a refrigerator here in St. Andrews, but I should at least be able to, to buy a cheap sweater or something and, and have some mending done on clothes or, or anything of the sort.
So thank you, Casey. It was a pleasure to get to know you better.
It was nice to have you interviewed.
That was Casey Murray. For information on COVID-19 safety and protocol during the municipal elections, visit the COVID-19 and Voting section of ElectionsNB.ca. Now here's our interview with Steve Neal. Steve, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Steve Neal. I'm not originally from St. Andrews. I grew up just outside of St. John where, went to high school. I actually went to university there as well. Went to the University of New Brunswick where I got my bachelor's degree in marine biology. I was then actually working at UMB when I was asked if I would come to St. Andrews for three months in 1998. And I was asked to come down and help out with a research project here at the St. Andrews Biological Station. Thought it sounded like a great opportunity, so I took it. I came down and as the saying goes, basically the rest is history. I started for three months, it turned into six, turned into a year, and then before I know it, I've been working there now for 23 years. So around 2001, 2000, it was about 2003, actually, when my wife and I built our first home here in St. Andrews, down in the Champlain subdivision. It was around that time when, when honestly I really thought like, you know, St. Andrews was going to be the place that we wanted to be. We both decided that this is where we wanted to live, this is where we wanted to raise our family. So at that time, I thought, you know, well, I guess it's time to, to start giving something back to the community. So in 2006, I joined the St. Andrews Fire Department. I became a volunteer firefighter, which has been fantastic. It's been extremely rewarding. It's a great group of people there. I've got to meet a lot of people, not always under the best circumstances, but, and that, you know, has been, again, it's been the last 15 years, I'm still very active there. I've been able to work my way up through the volunteer ranks, actually holding the position of captain at the moment, which again is something new and challenging for me. In addition to that, as our kids started to get a little bit more involved, I did volunteer, I coached youth soccer here in St. Andrews for about nine years. I got involved on the board of Charlotte United Soccer Club, serving as the vice president for several years. And then again, when the winter hits, I again transitioned into coaching minor hockey as well. So I've been coaching minor hockey for the last 10 years and the same with Charlotte County Minor Hockey. I got very involved in that, starting off as the ice scheduler for about five years, then serving as the vice president again for their board and then eventually the president for two years. So again, all very rewarding. It was a nice way to sort of get involved with the community and again, give something back. And then again, as, you know, my kids are getting older and I have taken a sort of a vested interest in council. It was always in the back of my mind anyway. And over the last year, again, with the meetings being broadcast via Zoom, it's been very easy for, you know, residents to, to keep up to date on them and follow along. So, so yeah, I got into the regular habit of following what was going on with, with the existing council and, and all the work that they were doing and, and thought that, you know, this was the year that I figured I'd put my name forward and, and offer to run as a councillor, so.
In your opinion, what are some of the biggest issues facing St. Andrews right now? Biggest and most important?
The biggest issue for me, I think, again, is going to be centered around housing. But I tend to look at it, I guess, as sort of in a broader scope. I see St. Andrews as, you know, in need of a, a bit of a strategic plan, I guess, moving forward. I'd really like to see the community continue to grow. There's lots of growth opportunities in St. Andrews, whether it's against our new wellness center, the Huntsman Marine Science Center, which has been discussing, you know, the, the formation of a new knowledge park, which is very exciting. And then of course, you know, the tourism and hospitality industry. So just over the last month or so in talking to people, I have noticed, you know, the same sort of comments over and over again about how, how hard it is to actually staff a lot of these, these jobs because of the lack of affordable or applicable housing. So I see that as being a real issue. But again, I would like to see, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to get elected, I would like to see the new council and the mayor, along with town staff and the community, really, you know, focus on that as a whole, I guess. The existing council has done a lot of work with the short-term rentals in St. Andrews, but I'd like to take sort of more of the holistic approach to it and combine, you know, the short-term rentals, long-term rentals, you know, the existing housing market, affordable housing, whether it's building lots, and sort of come up with that strategic plan as a council and a town moving forward that's going to encompass all of that. And again, allow our community to continue to grow. You hear a lot around rural New Brunswick about amalgamation, regionalization, things like this. So I don't think it's any secret that, you know, small towns do have that critical mass. So I think it is important for St. Andrews to have a strategy moving forward and how we can grow the town, continue to, to encourage people to want to come here, want to invest here, want to move their families here and, and ultimately work towards that. Along with that, I guess, you know, the other key issue that's been on a lot of people's minds is the, the new addition to the wharf, or I shouldn't say addition, but the replacement of the existing approach. That has been a fairly hot topic. And again, the existing council has done a great job getting it to where it is, but obviously it's going to be sort of on the mandate for the new council to actually see it come to fruition. So I'd be very excited to be part of that. And along with that, also addressing the issues of climate change. Again, these are issues that are going to come up, they're, you know, may not be immediate, but they are going to be there for the generations that are coming behind us. And I think, you know, it would be the responsibility of this council to start thinking in that direction and, and come up with plans to address them, so.
For the third question, three minutes left. If elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make the community a better place?
Ultimately, I think, you know, a lot of it would just be around communication. Those people that do know me, again, I think they would know me as being a hard worker. I'm not afraid to share an opinion or speak my mind. But again, I'm also a team player, so, you know, I look forward to working with council and the community and the town staff and really just, you know, make an effort to really make myself available for people. You know, I'm just, again, if fortunate enough to be elected, I would just be one councillor with one vote. But again, I, you know, would see myself as being very approachable. I'll always be available, you know, interested in hearing what the townspeople in the community, what their concerns are and be that voice for them, bringing that to, to council and, and hopefully, yeah, be able to, to see some of these things through, I guess.
In less than two minutes, can you tell me if you received a million dollar grant to use any way you wanted in the town, what would you do with it and why?
That's the loaded question, isn't it? I think ultimately, again, I would, you know, being all about the communication, I would have to take that back to the existing council and the community. And again, see, you know, along with the town staff, see what, what the immediate needs were. And if there was some place, whether it was infrastructure or something along those lines that we could address, so.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you very much, Vicki. I really appreciate the opportunity to come on.
That was Steve Neal. As we near the end of this special, be sure to visit ElectionsNB.ca's list of candidates section for a refresher of all the names of candidates in St. Andrews. Now here's your final St. Andrews Town Council candidate, Jonathan Kelly-Stokel. Jonathan, tell us about yourself. What's your backstory and why are you running for council?
My name is Jonathan Stokel. I'm originally from Moncton, New Brunswick. After graduating high school, I went to UMB in Fredericton, lived in Fredericton for about a dozen years. I did, I studied business and science there. I also ran my grandparents' farm for a number of years while I was there. While involved in farming, I, I was a part of six different kinds of agricultural boards from various levels, from the grassroots level in New Brunswick all the way to the Canadian Young Farmers Association. During that time, I sat, I oversaw the transition of a new general manager while I was the vice president of that organization and also sat in on, on overseeing our organization, get new funding from the Harper administration at times when they were doing cutbacks. So I met with the minister, Jerry Ritz, the agricultural minister, Jerry Ritz at the time. And so I'm getting involved in municipal politics because I, I believe you got to be a part of your community and do things from a grassroots level and I think I can bring a youthful voice to council.
In your opinion, what are some of the most important issues facing St. Andrews right now?
Well, because of the COVID pandemic, I think what is facing not only St. Andrews and Charlotte County, but also New Brunswick, is we're seeing an influx of people coming to our area, moving away from large cities to small towns. So what's going to be facing St. Andrews is how do we, how do we take the influx of people that are going to come into our area while maintaining the integrity of, of the downtown? So in saying that, it's also going to put a lot of pressure on an already existing problem, whereas we have for St. Andrews being a tourist town, we already We already have seen shortages of apartments or houses for rents for people that need to come in the summertime to work. So this influx of people that we're going to see is going to put the biggest pressure on that. So how do we keep rent affordable or actually get some units available, but also keep it affordable so that these youth can come? Because a lot of people can say, well, the transition of kids going off to school and MBCC, bring kids in, that'll help to, that'll help the transition of the summer students to the fall students. But we're still seeing, what we're seeing now is that our seasons are being extended in June and September and October, so we need more units, more than that transition.
If you're elected, what are some of the key steps you would take to make the community a better place?
To make the community a better place, I would, I guess, just improve on what the previous council has done. So the new wellness center that was, that was just built, possibly look at, we had a second doctor come in, which is wonderful. Do we, do we think about, look for the community's input, whether a third doctor would be necessary with, again, these added people that are going to be coming in over the next little Possibly to expand on the wellness center, whether something along the lines of mental health services to be a part of that and those kind of services, more than just the physical aspect of things. Oversee the expansion of, or the start of the new gym project that is still not started yet and hopefully be an advocator and a pusher to get that done. Another thing would be with the new wharf that will be started sometime in the next few years. I guess, help with the logistics of the day-to-day of that and also so that we can allow people to use the wharf while it's still being constructed to enjoy it when that's going on. What else? Possibly extend the trail routes that have already been over the, over the last three, four, five years that we've improved upon, maybe try and extend those to give people who are enjoying our great town, more routes to go, yeah, to enjoy.
Now, we have about four minutes left. If you received a million dollar grant to use for the town any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
If I had a million dollar grant, there's a few things that need, but we don't, St. Andrews is a lovely place and a lot of other places would be happy to be in the position that we're in. I think I would use it kind of very logically. One of the things is that there's been, and I'm not 100% sure where the steps are, but I know it's been talked about for three, four, five years about raising the downtown square. If you had a million dollar grant, you could go to the other three, to the levels of government, the two other levels of government and ask them for the funding so that we can actually get that done. I could also take that money to address the housing shortage. So before, whether, whether you use it as incentives for, for local developers, there's a couple of spots in towns that we could get things built, but base it on if there was incentives, that the rent would have to be a certain charge and so that would keep things low. Also, if some of the money was used towards something, say like Katie's Cove, that's that furrow for 15, 20 years, that if there was another snack bar or possibly a couple of lifeguards on duty, that would give four, five, six young people jobs and give another place for people to go in the community when they come here in the summertime.
All right. Thank you so much, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
That was Jonathan Kelly Stockall. And that concludes CHCO's Vote 21 Special Municipal Election Coverage for the Town of St. Andrews Town Council Candidates. Now be sure to do your part and vote in the 2021 municipal election on May 10th. I'm Vicky Hogarth and this has been Meet the St. Andrews Town Council Candidates on CHCO.